Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the September 2nd meeting of the Planning Board. It is seven o'clock and I am opening the meeting. And I'm going to start with a roll call vote, roll call for attendance. David Thorne.
President.
Scott Ferkler.
Present.
Jason Santos.
Present.
Barbara Peaty.
President.
Karen Puzelankton, present. I will read our statement about our open meetings. Pursuant to the June 16, 2021 Act Relative to Extending Certain COVID-19 Measures Adopted During State of Emergency, Suspending Certain Provisions of the Open Meeting Law GLC 30A Paragraph 20, The Planning Board will be using remote participation for this meeting. The audio of this meeting is being recorded and will be posted to the town's webpage within 24 hours in accordance with keeping the public informed of actions during this meeting. I would ask that all participants remotely attending this meeting, please state their name for identification purposes each time they speak throughout the meeting. At this time, our agenda calls for our board to go into executive session. We will do that for some time and then we will reopen the meeting to the public. I ask that when we decide to do this by vote, those of you that are on the call, please be in the waiting room so that when we're done, you'll be able to come right back into the public meeting. Do I have a motion from the board to go into executive session?
Motion to go into executive session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote. Jason.
Hi.
David.
Hi.
Barbara.
Hi.
Scott.
Hi.
Karen.
I.
We will see the public soon. Thank you.
That should just be the committee now.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. We are reconvening our public portion of our meeting. We have a 715 Continued Public Hearing Special Permit Modification, Walsh Brothers Building Company, Inc., Hollis Hills Senior Residential Development. We'll start with the board speaking and then we will open it up to public comment after we've heard from our representative from the builder and from board. I think we were waiting on this for in a statement from the Housing Trust to see if they were in agreement on a sum of money as opposed to an affordable unit, if my memory serves me correctly. Is there someone from the Housing Trust that would like to speak? Dave, do you want to?
Yes, I am not sure if there's somebody else here because I don't want to speak but over somebody else. But yes, it was voted, everybody voted to accept this.
Okay. I think that's what we were waiting for. Is that correct, board? Jason, Scott, Barbara?
Yes.
Karen, was there anything else for us to consider under this?
I think Mr. Walsh is on the line also, but two things come to mind is the, the when, the how much and the when. So I think you've talked about how much in terms of the calculation. And I, I think they would like to use this calculation based on the past three, the three years. So 18, 19, 20. I think if they put off the payment, it might actually increase with the 21 number. So my guess is that they'd like to put a bow on this based on the the years that we've used to calculate this. Mr. Walsh and I have gone back and forth and I included Brian in a conversation about when to make payments. So I think what, correct me if I'm wrong, JD, but the Inclusionary Housing Bylaw has a distribution of when the housing units are provided. So he is taking that chart, which if you have your zoning by law on page 88, there would be a 50% point, which they've passed already where I'm assuming that a half of the amount would be due and then there are some triggers that he's offering for the remainder of the payment. And I forget what the number of units are. 23 and 29 are the triggers for additional payments, I believe.
They're, they're actually, so your bylaw states that there are triggers at 50, 75, and then the remainder to be paid at 90. So what I was, we're at 16 units, right? We're at 17 units right now out of 32. So the 16, so the triggers would be 16, 24, and 28 units. So we're at 17. So we would pay the 50% now, which is $319,430. And then at 24 units, we would pay the 75%, which would be an additional 127,772. And then at 28 units, we'd be paying the final $191,658.
And you have 16 units already?
17, as of today are sold.
17 today is our so, how many are constructed out of the next threshold for the 24?
Three.
Three. So how long do you think it would take you to get there?
Based on sales and the recent calls we've been receiving, within the year.
And then the final?
The final, I mean, we're, we're a small business. There's, there's only three of us. So I would imagine we've built, for instance, this year, we've built seven so far and there will be more. So I mean, we, we go at a decent, you know, safe pace. I could see this stretching out for another year, possibly two. But the sales are going well.
Yep, that makes sense. From my layman's standpoint, that seems reasonable. Dave, what do you think?
I, yes, I think it's, I think that's reasonable.
Right. So based on the thresholds of building, it meets the inclusionary bylaw, right? The zoning bylaw. So other than that, Karen, does that sound detailed enough?
I think so. I think you just either have to tie it to the building permit for those units or the occupancy. And I'm assuming that he's suggesting occupancy of those milestone units.
Yes. So what I am suggesting based on the occupancy is that, so for our next, our next hurdle will be the 24. So I'm suggesting that 25th unit wouldn't receive occupancy until the second fee is paid and then again on the 29th unit. So basically the unit after each trigger.
My only concern is going more than a year timeframe because of the market and then also because of the allowable sales price calculated by DHCD. So I wouldn't, perhaps if, if you get to 24 and then aren't going to hit 29 within calendar 22, that you revisit the calculation of the cost.
So adjust it to the, to the appropriate year and current rates.
It could be exactly proportional?
Yes. We're fine with that.
Does that make any sense, Karen?
Yeah. So just to review, so we're suggesting that the proposed donation to the Housing Trust is made at each of the percentages, right? So at the 50%, that would be 16 complete units for a fee and occupied for 319,430. The trigger is the 17th unit for the payment.
Which is.
And then, is that correct?
Yeah. So that's already passed. So we pay you that now.
Right. So that is, that is due upon agreement.
Yes.
And then for the next 50%, that would be the 24 units where the trigger for occupancy at the 25th would be the payment of the sum of $127,772.
Correct.
The final trigger would be at the 75%, which would get us into the 29 units. And what Karen is saying is if that is not completed by the calendar year 2022, that we would revisit a calculation based on adjustments to the current year that we're in, waiting for completion. Am I understanding that correct?
For the remaining 25%, correct?
The remaining 25%, yes. That makes sense to me. Does anyone on the board have any questions about that? If we feel confident with what that is, it seems like Karen has dotted our eyes for us, prostartes. Do we want to motion so we can conclude this?
You have a lot of people in the audience. I don't know that there's anyone.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is there any, is anyone in the audience here for this hearing? I was just assuming they're here for the next one. Sorry. I should not make that assumption. I don't see any hands raised. So if we have no input from the audience in regard to the 715 hearing, of course, I can't find my paper now. Walsh Brothers Building Company, then I would entertain a motion from the board.
I'll make a motion to, what would it be to approve the special permit modification for Walsh Brothers?
It would be the, it would be the donation to the Housing Trust.
Yes, I make motion to approve the donation to the Housing Trust.
Do we want to be specific about the details that we just outlined and attach it to the occupancy? Should we be motioning that, Karen?
Um, Scott, you could just say as we discussed in detail.
As, as we previously discussed in detail.
You may also want to close the public hearing.
I also make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second on all of that?
Stuck in on all of this.
All right, roll call vote. Scott.
Hi.
Barbara.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
Dave.
Hi. And I just want to mention that I also sit on that board. So I did vote on that. So just, just for the record.
Thank you. And Karen, I. Okay. So we have closed the 715 public hearing. And now we are going to open the public hearing Scenic Road, Merch Prentice Realty Trust, Triangle Farm Subdivision between 190 and 164 Mill Street.
Before I sign off, thank you, everyone.
You're welcome. Bye. Do we have a representative on the call?
Yes, thank you.
Overview. Hi.
Sure. Hi, how are you? This is Rob Truax with GLM Engineering. So this is the entrance way for the definitive subdivision called Triangle Farm. This is for the roadway going in off of Mill Street at the entrance. You've seen a couple scenic roads come by you for the two new houses there on the A and R plant that are just up the street from this. So what we're looking to do is take the stone wall out and similarly, be similar to what we did on the others is use the stones that we take out for the wall and use them to improve the existing conditions of the wall along the street. If you go out there and look, it's, well, it's actually difficult to see because of the brush, but the wall is in pretty disrepair. It's, it's, it's very sparse. It's not, it's not a very good looking, you know, farm type country wall that we see like up on Highland Street, maybe where the farms are up there. So that, that would be the proposal to take the rocks that we use and take out and then improve the existing wall on the front edge of the site. So there, there are no trees that have to come down within the right of way. It's, you know, this area was at one point in time, some time ago, it was all open field. And now it's really just kind of grown in with brush and overgrowth and it's very thick. So I think back, you know, 20 years ago, when we were working out there, this was an open field and you could walk around out there. So, so that's the proposal before you. I do have, I did give you guys, I think I sent it in a plan showing the entrance. If you're, if anyone had a chance to go out there, it was pretty obvious where the road goes in. There's a telephone pole sitting right in the center of the road. So I, I think that's it. I really don't have much to offer other than that and answer any questions you might have.
So these, this wall that you are going to, you're proposing to open up so that the roadway can go through, these, these rocks that are existing in the wall right now will each be placed back into the wall in spaces where they would best be utilized to reconstruct the uniform, uniformity of the wall. But they will be freestanding. We're not going to be building a modern wall. It's going to stay as a field wall that we would see in any farmland. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Just want to be clear so everybody understands. Are we losing any trees here?
No.
Have trees been lost here?
No. There's no trees within the right of way in this area. It's just, it's just thick brush.
Okay. Board members, do you have any questions? Dave, you got any questions? I don't want to put you on the spot. I just.
No, I, I think there's always concern about the stone walls and making sure that the stone walls are preserved. I've looked at the stone walls down there several times. I just would, again, like to preserve the stone walls. And if we can, I guess your thought is that you will be bringing, opening the stone wall and curving it a little bit and fixing the stone wall down the road. I think one of my questions was the trees, but it looks like they're all on the inside and mostly it's brush.
I took a ride by and I frankly think that the brush hides the walls anyway. And so it might be, you know, it, an addition to the scenic route then with the new road or the driveway, whatever.
Anyone else? Um, I'm just going to kind of throw out there that I think it might be nice to see a few trees out there. We're putting in more roadway that takes away from the area. It changes the look by doing it. It, it could very well clean things up. And in the same respect, it removes some green. And I think I'd like to see some sort of a proposal for maybe a, a couple of trees at the beginning of the roadway, something to soften the look of what we're doing there. And you know, one of the things that we hear from residents all the time is tree-lined streets are such an important component of the community. Do you think that, that would be something that Triangle Farm would be willing to do?
I don't think it's a problem at all. I'm just trying to, I'm just pulling up the subdivision, I computer. I believe we're required, Karen, you correct me, I would require to do street trees within the subdivision as part of the town regulations.
Every 50 feet?
Yeah. So I, I don't see why we couldn't, you couldn't condition this that a couple of trees are planted behind the roundings out near the street area.
Yeah, I think that would be nice.
And if you actually wanted to add to that, there's probably a good chance that along the front edge of those two corn lots, that they'll probably clear the brush out of there along the wall on both sides. And if that's the case and they clear that, then it would probably be in the best interest to put a few trees along the wall as well. Like continue that down Mill Street at 50 feet on the center or whatever is required by tree planting within the subdivision. So if you started behind the rounding and then just continued up the street and then down the street if they clear the brush out. My guesstimate is that they'll probably, it's very thick, it's invasive, it's overgrown, they'll probably clean it up when they build the houses to make it look nice. And so if that's the case, then a couple of trees along Mill Street would also look nice behind the wall. I think you can condition it that way as well.
Lot of bittersweet.
Yeah.
Lot of bittersweet. Yeah. You can't like, I don't know who spoke earlier, but you can't see the wall driving down the road. It's so thick in there. You have to get out and walk in the brush. So if it does get cleaned up and the wall's enhanced and made to look nicer than a few trees behind, it would also look a lot nicer. There are some trees behind the wall on the property that can probably be preserved if they're, if they're not, you know, into this, if they're not, you know, in bad shape and they're able to save them. But I, I would be comfortable with that condition.
So, so that our language is measurable, what do we mean by a few?
What did you say, Karen? That the by, the regulations require a tree to be planted every 50 feet on center approximately?
Yes.
So the frontage along the street on lot 1B, for instance, is about 150 feet. So if you just put a condition that they would plant, plant trees 50 feet on center, you would end up with approximately three trees along the frontage of that lot. The other lot only has 100 feet of frontage on Mill Street. So you don't end up with two.
So lot B would have three. And you have a lot would have two. All right. So.
So it's 1B. I'm sorry. So make that, it's lot 1B would have three and lot 6B would have two.
Okay. All right. If, Ford, do you have any other questions? Because I'd like to go to you first before I open it up to the audience.
Okay, I'm proposing a size. I'm sorry.
Um.
What do you require? Okay. What's the caliper in the regulation that I don't have it? Four. Four what inches in diameter? That's the, that's a big tree. I've never seen.
Won't it look beautiful? Imagine how much you'll be able to sell those houses for.
That they're going to sell, yeah, they're already selling crazy numbers nowadays. Is that what's required, Karen? A four inch street tree?
I don't actually remember off the top of my head. I like that number though.
Yeah, me too.
Could we just, could we make the condition to be in compliance with the planning board regulations, whatever the street tree sizing is required?
Do you know what it is, Karen? Can you find it?
I'm going to look for it.
It's almost the last page in the subdivision regs.
MXB.
Page in there.
Last page of text before the appendices start.
Doesn't specify size.
And you're shying away from four?
That's a, that's just a very large tree to plant. That's all I know. Generally, they're anywhere from one and a half to two and a half caliber. Oh, wow. Okay. The developed plant tree is having a height of at least eight feet and a diameter of at least four inches. 50 feet apart. So no, it is four inches. Okay. That's what your regulations state.
Thank you for looking.
It's in the section 5.5.5.3 shade trees.
Alright, you just wrote that for us.
I thought four was the number.
Alright.
That's a good memory. Good job.
There you go. I'm sure there are professionals out there that plant a big tree like that. Anybody else?
They're gonna have to.
Anyone else from the board? I, I do see that we have an audience member who does want to speak. I just want to make sure the board is set first. All set? Then I'm going to open it up to the audience and Deb Moore has patiently tried to raise her hand a few times.
Hi, Deb Moore, one eighty-three Mill Street. I would just like to say that take into consideration that the character of Mill Street has changed considerably over the last three or four years. We had well over twenty-five enormous trees removed because of gypsy moth infestation and they died. And we just had trees removed from Ever Source that were perfectly good trees. Instead of just cutting them where they were interfering with wires, they took the trees down. Two houses that are now being built and almost, they're practically finished. There were trees that were on the town side of the stone wall. And there was probably six to eight of them. And I left one day to do some errands and when I came back, they were all gone. And the people lied to me and told me they had permission to take them down. And this came before the board at another hearing several months ago. So we've lost a considerable amount of trees and the, the street looks totally different than it's ever had in my forty-six years of living here. It's nice to hear that the trees are gonna, there's gonna be trees planted that are the four-inch in caliber size. There's supposed to be five trees on each lot to replace the ones that were taken down. My only thought is, I know the tree warden wants to have them on the property so that the people that own the property are responsible for the trees. But I don't know if there's anything you can do in any language, because once they're on their property, they can do whatever they want with them. They can cut them down, they can, you know, do whatever they want and the trees will still be gone. Not that they would do that, but they certainly have the right to do that because it's on their property. So I, I just want people to keep in mind that Mill Street has changed considerably. It doesn't look the same as it did even five years ago. And it's supposed to be a country road, a scenic road, and it's losing that character considerably over the past few years, kind of rapidly. And, you know, I don't know how much can be preserved on the other side of the stone wall. I, you know, because it seems like when they built those other two houses, they just totally took out every single tree even on the property. So it's just like wide open spaces right now. And that's kind of sad. As a resident that's been there so long, I'm never going to see, you know, the maturity of these trees in my lifetime for sure. And I would just like people to consider, as some of you had mentioned on the board, you know, it's a scenic road. Well, it's rapidly losing its character as a scenic road and what we used to see going up and down the street. And my other consideration I'd like you to think of is please don't plant oak trees because the gypsy moss will be back and they'll be gone. Plant something that there is, it doesn't have as much infest, infestation of different types of moss or different types of things, creatures that would eat the leaves on the trees or destroy the trees. I don't know if red maples or someone can do some research into what is a hotter tree that grows pretty rapidly with the least amount of care. But I would hate to see the company plant some trees and then they only last a few years. I think that is something that really needs to be looked into considering how we've lost twenty-five trees to the gypsy moth. And maybe asking an expert in the area that has some good information about money well spent on trees that are going to stay for a lifetime anyways. The other question I had, does, is, is there, are there regulations that make them open the stone wall up as wide as they are saying they're going to open it up? Or can it be a smaller opening? Does it have to be that opening because of regulations within the town?
Robert, you want to take that?
Yeah, well, there is, the, the right of way, we have to open it up to the edge of the right of way so that the utilities and the grass strips can all, can all be put in place. The right of way is narrower than a normal road because it's a, it's such a short cul-de-sac, so normally it's fifty feet, this one's only forty. So it does help in that sense.
It says forty-eight feet here.
That's the, when you, when you come into the roundings. So the actual right of way is only forty where it goes in.
But you're taking down forty-eight feet of stone wall?
Correct. Because the road flares as it comes out to Mill Street for the, for the curbing, for the roundings to get in and out of the site, so it opens up as you come out to the road. But if there was fifty feet and a twenty-four foot road versus forty and an eighteen foot, that would probably be even greater. That number would be larger.
Are there any sidewalks in this development?
There are not.
Deb, do you have any other questions?
No. Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else on the call who has any questions? I don't see another hand up. I don't see another raised hand. Board members, do, do we feel that we have enough information here? Is there something else that you would like to discuss? Jason?
No, I'm ready to motion whenever you are.
I, I think one of the things that Deb Moore brought up might be a good idea to at least consult the tree warden for the best hardy, hardiest tree that would be insect resistant or as insect resistant as possible to continue, put that in with what we're talking about for the trees. I think that that would be a good idea to incorporate that. And I think that's a great suggestion, Deb. Thank you. So, with that said, I'd be happy to entertain a motion.
So I would motion to approve the proposal under the definitive open space subdivision for Triangle Farm. Contingent on review by the tree warden for those trees that we discussed that will be planted in the development. And that's it.
Clarification, just to go with the specificity of what we discussed, but not only the ones in the subdivision, but the ones along Mill Street, right, Jason?
Yes, the ones along Mill Street as well.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I will second that.
Thank you, Dave. Alright, roll call vote. Barbara?
I.
Scott?
Hi.
Jason? Dave?
Hi.
Karen?
I.
I would.
Close the.
I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing for scenic road on Mill Street.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second?
I'll second that.
Roll call vote. Barbara?
I.
Scott?
Hi.
Jason? Dave?
Hi.
Karen?
I.
Thank you for everyone who came for that public hearing. And we're now going to move into some general board business.
Thank you. Do you, do you need me to, to be on the call for the endorsement of the my lodge for that project and for the covenant? Any questions on that?
You want to just move that up Karen? He can just.
Sure. Yep.
Just in case you had any questions, I'm here now, so. I'm actually going to jump to another hearing.
I don't have that in front of me Karen is so.
Yep, so just a little process issue. So under the subdivision control law, you approve a subdivision, you issue a certificate of action which has a bunch of conditions. The subdivision control law has a few more steps after that. One is to endorse the plan. In order to endorse the plan, the applicant would either have to build the road or put the, put the subdivision under a covenant which guarantees that they'll be creating those improvements. Or they can put forward a surety for the value of the construction. So in, in this case, they're starting with the traditional route of putting a covenant on the land, which means that they can't convey or build on individual lots without going to the next step of providing a roadway and the required improvements and/or putting surety in place to do that. So step number one would be to put the covenant in place. So the owner has executed the covenant. It's been reviewed by council. And unfortunately with this remote meeting, it's not possible for you all to sign it, so. I guess I would encourage you to make a motion to either empower a, a single individual, perhaps your agent, or myself to sign on your behalf. And probably to do the same thing with the endorsement of the actual plan document.
So as the agent, I would like to make a motion to empower Karen Sherman to sign for the covenant. And what's the other one Karen?
Endorse the actual final plan so that it can be recorded at the registry.
And endorse the final plan to be recorded at the registry.
Do we have a second?
I second that.
Oh, second.
Thank you. Alright. Roll call vote. Scott?
Hi.
Barbara?
I.
Jason? Dave?
Hi.
Karen?
I.
Alright, thank you very much. Have a good night, everyone.
You're welcome. Bye-bye. Let's see. If we just go through our one through six order, we have minutes from the August twelfth, twenty twenty-one meeting. I'm assuming that you've read through. And is there anything that you would like to discuss, change, or approve?
I can make a motion to approve the minutes from the August twelfth meeting.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Was that Dave?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, so roll call vote. Barbara?
I.
Jason?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Karen?
I.
David, I.
One thing that I just noticed looking through really quickly and sorry to interrupt, is that you wanted me to schedule a site visit for the subdivision being proposed. Forget what it's called.
Eagle path?
Eagle path, right. So I don't know if you, any of you have made it out to Prospect Street, but both Robert Duff and the builder, Bill Bernard, have reached out to me to say that they're totally flexible to me, either the whole board or individuals, but that they would warn you that the poison ivy is fierce if you want to do a cross-country walk.
Oh.
High boots.
Yeah.
Absolutely. I know it's a long way off, but I could do like Wednesday, Wednesday the fifteenth in the afternoon. Like between like four and five. Could anybody else do that?
I could do it. Wednesday the fifteenth.
Sure.
Dave, could you, do you need a different time, Dave?
No, that's fine. Wednesday the fifteenth, sure. That's great.
Scott, Jason, interested? Or do you just want an update when we get back?
I will shoot. If I can't make it, I can't make it. I'll go on my own, but good idea.
Alright, so Karen, want to try for that and get back to us? Alright.
Will do. Thank you.
Yep.
See what my schedule looks like for that day. If I could make it, I'd love to, but if not, yeah, somebody can just catch me up.
Okay. Alright. Next up on the agenda, do we have any approvals that required subdivision?
Yes, you have one within the Constitution Village subdivision. Dale McKinnon is on the call from Durin, Hammers.
Forgot how to unmute, sorry about that.
Hello.
How you doing? We've made an arrangement to move a driveway on a house, so we're re-dividing three lots to allow a us to arrange for the movement of a house further away from the so we don't have to have a retaining wall. So the purpose of the proposed change is just to allow that construction on one road, but because the lot next to it has the minimum frontage, we had to take some frontage from an, from the other side of another lot. So we're dealing with the change of three lots, but it's really just the area necessary for the one lot on the right. Karen, I don't, I don't have that planned with me. I didn't realize I was going to have to.
Can you just tell us which, which lot number we're looking at?
Yeah, so it's, it's, lot eighty is on the left. Thirty-one A is, I believe, in the center. And then thirty-two, I believe.
Chris, do you have the plan?
Believe you sent me that one.
I think it's posted.
Right, it's that, right? Right, so I see like 32B is kind of like this funky dotted line thing.
Right.
And 81's below it, and 83B is below it. Right?
I don't think it's, is it 83B on the far right?
It looks like it says it's 83B1, if my eyes are clear. And then on the left is 81.
I thought it started with, it's lot 80 and 31. I think the numbering system drives me crazy. I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's not, it's not numeric, it doesn't.
No, it's not, because it's leftover from
Right.
all the subdivisions since 2002, so.
Okay, so if I'm looking at 80A, it's got that drainage easement on it.
Right.
So.
We're taking a triangle in the middle lot, and we're adding it from one side over to the other side, so we're just moving that square footage and the frontage along the middle lot, so that we can provide the additional area we need on the far right lot.
I'm sorry, but I couldn't be more confused.
All right.
So, the triangle is coming out of which lot number? 31.
The, I'm sorry, I don't have a plan in front of me.
It looks like slots 3C to me.
Okay, there could, yes, it might be relabeled 3C, that's correct. Is that the lot in the middle?
Yeah.
Okay, it used to be 3B. Now it's 3C, okay. So, what we've done is we cut a triangle on the, to move it on for the, it's on the right side over to the left side, so we could give that the 185 foot of frontage that's needed on that lot. So, we took it out of the lot on the left and added it to the lot on the right, so that we could bring the driveway out along that straight line property.
Okay, so you're taking the triangle out of 80A and adding it into 31B. That's what it says.
Okay, yes, that's correct. But we're still, we're adding the same, we had to add that triangle. We took it off of, let's say, the middle lot and added it on to the left side of the lot. Because we had to add on that frontage.
Okay. I think I got it now.
Sorry.
Anyone else have any questions? Karen, is there something we should be thinking about?
I don't think so. I mean, I'm happy to hear that they're eliminating a retaining wall.
Yeah.
Once again, though, this is an empowerment, I think, so you can either empower the agent or myself to do the endorsement on your behalf.
Make a motion to empower Karen Sherman to endorse on our behalf.
Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Dave. All right, roll call vote. Jason.
Hi.
Dave.
Hi.
Scott.
Hi.
Barbara.
Hi.
Karen.
I.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See it a little while.
Okay, well, don't go far. All right, um, I'm assuming the appointment of the associate member is us to formally appoint. I thought we already did Warren, so are we formally appointing Barbara to the planning committee? Because we didn't do that formally.
Oh, you could do that as well. My recollection was that you held on to Warren as your appointee to several committees, but did not appoint him as the associate member, so that if you needed a substitute on a special permit issue, he would be that. That was, you know, that was Josh's sole role versus
Right.
Warren has taken sort of the
Multiple.
ambassador role.
Okay. So, we're looking for a motion on that.
I'll make a motion to that effect.
Do we have a second to that effect?
I did second it.
Okay, roll call vote, Dave.
Hi.
Barbara.
Hi.
Scott.
Hi.
Jason. And Karen.
I.
And I also thought that we had to officially appoint Barbara to the long-range planning committee. Barbara, would you accept the nomination to
Sure.
serve as the long range.
Actually, there's, they're meeting tonight, so I'm not think.
Yeah, actually canceled their meeting.
Oh, did they?
For lack of quorum, yeah.
Oh, well, good. I mean, I told her right away that, you know, we had already planned a meeting for tonight, and this is my primary responsibility.
It sounds like Barbara's still interested in doing that, so would someone like to make a motion to appoint Barbara to do it when it fits into the calendar and doesn't conflict with the planning board?
I'll make a motion to that.
Do I have a second? Okay, roll call vote. Scott.
Hi.
Dave.
David, I.
Jason.
Hi.
Karen. I. Does Barbara vote for herself? And Barbara.
I.
All right, so that gets us into now the special town meeting warrant issues. So, I'm going to ask Karen to take it away.
Want to do zoning first, or do you want to, I'm assuming the audience is for the road acceptance issues?
Um. Want to do the road acceptance, so that these people can go home?
Sure.
Okay.
8:57 by my clock. I'll give you the two-minute address. So, you have previously acted on bond reduction, performance bond reductions at Fafford's request. Attorney Conforty's on the call. She had previously submitted those performance bond request reductions, and you had acted on them. That would be the, you know, the step one in the general law, the subdivision control law in terms of process. So, those, that action was taken. And then your next step to be contemplated is whether you move the roadways forward for acceptance. We had previously whittled the roadways down to Mayflower Landing, the remainder of Mohawk Path, since a part of Mohawk is already public to the intersection of Mayflower. So, this would be from that point to the end. And then Indian Circle. We had previously, I'm sorry, we being staff had previously recommended to not address the portion of Governor Prince that is constructed currently within this subdivision, as it is a through to the Constitution Village subdivision as well. So, three roadways. Quite a length of road in terms of linear footage, all three of them. There are some remaining policy issues, and so I've talked with the DPW Director Sean Reese, as well as town council, about whether those are, you know, planning board issues under your authority, or whether they're more policy issues directed towards the select board. So, the process would go, if you move this forward to the select board, they could move forward under a separate statute to schedule a public hearing to what's called lay out the street. And that is, they would reserve a warrant article. They would have a separate public hearing process to evaluate whether to move forward on the roads. And then they would be making a recommendation to the town clerk and to the town meeting about road acceptance. And the roadway acceptance would need to be executed within 120 days of a town meeting vote. So, you're looking at October 8th, excuse me, I believe it's the 18th, special town meeting. So, you're looking at, you know, resolution of any punchless items and legal review of all the final documents shortly thereafter. Sean and I had a discussion about overwinter maintenance. And, you know, they knew this was coming and are, you know, prepared to extend the routing on their private plow contracts to include these roadways. The remaining policy issues. The issue of streetlight implementation, that is on the two streets that have conduits and bases, as well as the street that has no conduits or bases. Sort of has been dealt with partially on a policy issue by the town administrator. There is a work order. And there would be a process for the select board to hold a maintenance bond on those streets, as opposed to the performance bond that you all held on the road. They would hold a bond after the fact to guide the utility company in Fafford through the road, through the streetlight installation. So, Travis has acknowledged to the utility company that these roads will become public and that the town is willing to accept the burden of, you know, future electric bills. The other policy issue of the three easements that I believe in your packets you have a description of, so there are three drainage easements that were not on the original subdivision plan, but that have come to be because of the grading on these sites and because of the open space. Because of the well, I guess that's in a nutshell. There are three easements that weren't on the plans, and so these three are not typical. And policy-wise, again, I believe we would, you know, ask the select board to sort of evaluate the situation if we would like an atypical drainage situation coming into the town system. I think it's very quantifiable. It's a small portion of the overall drainage system for this subdivision itself. And I think the town would be willing to take those. That would require modification to the plans, to the as-built plans and acceptance plans that have been submitted. And I think Fafford would be willing to do that along the way. And I guess, just to clarify, all the plans have been submitted for quite some time and have been revised several times as a result of staff review. Did I miss anything, Angela? Sorry. No, that's more than I was expecting, actually, so.
All right. I'll start with board members. Is there if you have any questions for Karen or Angela, or any opinions, comments, concerns? Do we see an engine site? Perhaps. Right, perhaps. So, you're saying that we could make a recommendation to the select board, that as the planning board, we would be willing to accept these roads as long as the planning board evaluates these easements and is willing to accept them, right, through this drainage area? And also discuss this streetlight install situation. A final cleanup. So that ultimately these roads could receive the services as part of the town. I think that's ultimately what we're talking about here, right?
Yeah.
So, it sounds to me almost as though I could be wrong, I could be hearing this incorrectly, that the planning board's work here is pretty much done, and now it's up to the select board on what they want to do. So, ultimately, we would be voting to release this to the select board to make their final decision. So, I guess that's kind of what we're asking is, do, are we, do we feel comfortable with that? Are we ready, are we ready to let them go? You're all being a little silent.
Yeah, I would support that, Karen.
Okay. Is that a motion?
Well. Dave?
Has, has our engineer looked at this? Oh, they, so that we know this is a
Yep, so the town hasn't had an engineering inspector on this project for five-plus years.
Wow.
These roadways have been finished. The highway superintendent has worked on punch list items with the developer.
Well, I wasn't thinking so much about the road, but as they, the drainage easements.
Yes, these three easements that I called out and Dale described in detail as the project engineer on the Fafford side of things have not been evaluated. Hoping that Fafford would agree to expend the remaining monies in their 53G inspection account to do that and/or fund it. But thinking that that's a policy issue on the select board's part. Not to, not to push that off, but.
But to push it off.
Well, for me, it's the same amount of work.
Right, to put it in the jurisdiction that has the authority to move it in the other direction.
In effect, they're the type of connections that someone might do after the fact. Rather than upfront, or at least the way I'm processing that at the moment.
Yeah.
And so, I think there's an, I do think it's a more of a policy issue.
Mm-hmm, okay. Thank you.
Anyone else on the board?
Uh, could I have one question?
Yeah, yeah, let me just finish up with the board first, okay, and make sure the board's all set.
I'm good, Karen. Thank you.
Okay. Everybody?
Yep.
Okay, so thanks, Shen. You want to talk?
Yes, I have one question. Last year, December, I think Christmas, December 25th, my backyard, the dirt is falling off. I contacted Wellington. He did once time, I think the car is coming, just the bottom climb, clean a little bit of dirt. But I don't know, is it vehicle or something? And then just stop. And recently, I called him, he didn't answer my. Call or message. So see my back, now the, because we see a lot of rings, the dirt is a. Could you see the picture?
Yeah, so it looks like.
Yeah, it's already cleaned, the part already going down, the dirt is down, but the bottom still a lot of the stone. And the big, some big stone is go back to my back, but I cleaned. But I needed the people still clean, finish my backyard. It's a long time from December to now, almost one year.
So this is during construction? Is this because of water and weather like?
Yeah.
Water and weather or because of construction?
Ah, it's weather.
So like an erosion that's causing stones to come down?
Yes, and at the beginning, I talked to them, you need a clean. And then otherwise, the dirt is not really thick, it's really loose, you know, and then not stay, I talked to them before they. Finish and they did it, they use a plastic like the net put over there. It's not stay, it's still, this year is still.
Yeah, I think that we've had people on the calls before. I think, I think Dave and I might be the ones that have been on this the longest. Where there's been these conversations about. Loose rocks, et cetera. I don't know where this fits into the road acceptance, but it certainly fits into a conversation. Angela, Dale, you guys have heard this before.
I know that Faford has spent. Quite a bit of time having geotechnical engineers out there and structural engineers to certify the integrity of the wall. I know that vegetation animals can loosen small stones that can then. Fall down the wall during weather events. I don't know if that's possibly what's happening to you. I don't know what else to say that. I do have many reports about the structural integrity of the wall, so. I would say that probably what's happening is normal, even though it's an inconvenience and. I don't know how many stones are in your backyard, but. I don't think it's out of the ordinary for something like that to happen.
But anyway, it's happened, so could you tell the company to fix it? The Faford need to fix it.
I can't make that decision. I haven't seen what's going on. I can have somebody go out there and take a look, but. I, again, as Karen said, this is not very. It's not exactly relevant to the street acceptance, but. If you send me some pictures, maybe Karen can give you my email address and you can send me some pictures of what's happening to the wall behind your house.
Okay. Right, so, so you'll send your email to Karen Sherman. Karen Sherman, yeah, and then she will forward it to Angela Conforti. And they will get back to you regarding your wall and what can be done. Okay, the slope in the back and what can be done, okay? So first step is you compile your pictures and you send them to Karen Sherman.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah.
And then we're gonna count on Angela to keep her word and figure out what can be done.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else on the call in regard to the roads? I don't see any other hands up. So bored. How do you want to handle this?
I can make a motion. And. It can be a motion to approve. Is that what we're doing? We are. Concluding, Karen, as you say, are.
I think you just make a recommendation to the select board to place the, the. Streets on the warrant for acceptance and then they can move forward with their own public hearing under their own jurisdiction.
So moved.
What she said. No, thank you for the clarification on the language. I think it's important that we have it. Do we have a second?
Absolutely.
Second.
Okay, so roll call vote. Dave?
David, I.
Scott?
Hi.
Barbara?
Hi.
Jason?
Hi, and thank you Karen Sherman for saving the day again.
And Karen, I. All right, thank you. And.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And it looks like the last thing that we are doing is.
Zoning by law amendment?
Yeah.
I sent you. A draft that Kate Federoff had put together. Regarding couriers and delivery. This is for adult use marijuana. I think attached to that was a Q and A piece that the. That the Cannabis Control Commission had put out. About couriers and delivery, what differentiates it from retail? And what doesn't? Kate has offered some definitions for section one E of the bylaw. So a definition of courier, delivery licensee, delivery operator. And then a change to the existing marijuana establishment definition. And then as a second part, calling out the delivery licensees. That is courier and delivery operator. Into the table of uses. Her scenario was a prohibition across the board. Karen and I had a brief discussion. I mean, I just kind of marked it up a little bit. Entirely up to you and to discuss. If you wanted to move this forward. Your action would be to submit a draft to the select board. Because it's a special town meeting. They need to grant permission to move forward with a, with a bylaw amendment proposal. At a spring town, at an annual town meeting. The planning board would just follow the regular course of action under chapter forty A, section five. The board would be a sponsor. Of any article, but for a special town meeting, the town bylaw. Adds a step that you ask the select board for permission. If they granted permission for you to move forward with it, then they would be acknowledging it. In warrant and then would volley it back to you to schedule the required public hearing under forty A, section five. My guess is that we would, if you move forward, we would be talking about a October, early October. Special public hearing, sorry. And I would ask Kate to be there to discuss whatever merits with you. If you started with. With either an allowance or a special permit use. In any zoning district, you can, during the hearing process, make the amendment stricter. You cannot loosen it up in the public hearing. Same thing with town meeting, they're not supposed to be making it looser, they're supposed to be tightening the. The language to meet the letter of the law. So you start with an allowance in it. Either by rider by special permit in at least a zoning district. You could ultimately decide to prohibit it across the board. It's entirely up to you. She's discussing this as a hot button issue because Travis has received. A three or four. Request to go in front of the select board. To negotiate an agreement with this type of user. Either as a standalone facility or within an existing licensed facility. So I don't believe it's going away. If the Cannabis Control Commission allows existing facilities to have sort of a subset within their facility. My guess is that people will be recruiting to get this type of use.
So Karen, we're talking about what? We're talking about allowing delivery? Is that, is that what we're talking about right now?
So what Kate had previously advised is that if the use is not called out within the table. That it is in effect prohibited. The Cannabis Control Commission's ruling and calling out these as special licenses. Seem to contradict that. So zoning is sort of playing catch up with what the Cannabis Control Commission has sort of implemented. Implemented as a regulation. So if you wanted to reinforce the community position against retail. You could strictly prohibit these particular uses. Someone currently could probably make a run at the existing bylaw. For these two uses. Because we don't address them. So the prohibition is not. Given is what I think the Cannabis Control Commission has said.
So I have a question. The way I'm reading it, and since we've talked, I've done a little bit more thinking about it. So what we're, we're not saying that. People who live in R one don't, won't necessarily get. Marijuana delivered. What we're saying is that you can't set up a delivery. Company in R one. So then what I think that I say to myself is. What we've been seeing over and over again in our community is that. Any more intensive use of us hosting traffic generating companies. People don't seem to have a lot of stomach for. We're not saying if we say, no, you can't set up here, that no, you can't get it delivered. We're just saying that it wouldn't originate out of our community as a business. Am I understanding that right?
Well, I think, yeah, well, I think it's a good thing to talk with Kate about, but I think what she originally said is if you take the stance that it's prohibited. That you also are prohibiting delivery within the community. And I think that will be the test of the law.
But that's not something that we have the ability to. Change, like we don't write the law.
No, she's saying that, that the Cannabis Control Commission may issue a license and someone may begin delivering in the community. And the community would receive no benefit. What she's saying is if you preemptively want to control the use. That is accept the three percent sales tax and then implement, perhaps implement. An additional local sales tax on the use, that it might be a source of revenue that. Balances whatever the public concern might be. I, I think her advice is that you at least. Define those uses as sort of new uses coming along. And if you want to prohibit them as being business, doing businesses in Holliston. So either individuals or companies doing business in Holliston. That you also add it to the use table and explicitly, explicitly prohibit.
So if a company based out of Milford delivers marijuana to it. Somebody in Holliston.
They're not supposed to be at the moment, is my understanding of what her interpretation is.
Yeah, like who, who enforces that? I mean, like, we certainly don't. I mean, how, how would you possibly enforce something like that?
Don't know.
My bigger concern is that you have a courier, a fleet of vehicles parking somewhere. Going to. The local wherever. To, you know, you put an order in on your phone. And, you know, it's DoorDash, it's DoorDash for weed. DoorDash for weed. So where? Where does DoorDash set up, right? Does DoorDash have to be? In our community, have to be part of a facility that already exists?
Well, so that's the difference between DoorDash and regulated marijuana. Is that the Cannabis Control Commission says, we need to know who you are and where you are. Because we're going after you for sales tax.
Right, so this wouldn't be like a fleet. This could be like me, if I want another job. I become a.
In theory, yeah.
DoorDash weed driver.
Yeah.
Just trying to understand. And then that would mean that I then could deliver to who lives in Holliston. Because we would be saying yes to that. But does that mean that I have to park my car? Either in an industrial village commercial or commercial one? Or can I only deliver to those three places like?
I'd think you have to have a business, a place of business. What that means, I don't know explicitly, but.
I'm thinking all kinds of names.
All of the calls that we've fielded between Travis and I have been industrial. People are looking at industrial real estate. I haven't talked to anybody who's looking at commercial real estate.
Can we require that they have environmentally friendly cars? I mean, come on, they're, they're using a natural remedy, so.
The town voted to deny the retail. Is that right?
That is correct.
Last year. So to me. This feels like. A retail. Shop with, without somebody even having to get in the car. That's, you know, that's to me how I see it. That's like, okay, great, I can't open, I can't, I can't open a pizza shop. But I'll deliver pizza to your door, so. Right, that's kind of how I see it.
And it sounds like it becomes what we've mostly been hearing that the community doesn't want. More noise, more cars. I guess what I just don't like about it, but it doesn't mean that I'm changing my mind on it, is that if we say no to it across the board, we're saying, no, you can't get it delivered. Like that this doesn't seem, I think that even.
I think Kate needs to walk you through that part of it. I don't really understand that part of it, but the way that she's interpreted it. When the select board fielded this first opportunity about maybe four or five months ago. Before the select board. I'm sorry, before the Cannabis Control Commission did its most recent regulation change. That was her position that. You know, people weren't supposed to be delivering within Holliston. She can probably clarify that. It's really a moving target.
I, I. I'm inclined to feel like. Community said no to retail. This falls under a retail definition according to the. the community said no to retail, this falls under a retail definition according to the Cannabis Commission in the state, that's not our definition, it's theirs. And the will of the people in Holliston have seemed to have been pretty clear about this. On top of the fact that I think the will of the people have been moving toward asking for more quiet, not noise.
I think what Kate's gonna tell you is that she's also had a discussion with a local attorney about a circulation of a petition to bring back the retail question.
Well, I would be inclined to not put the cart before the horse or the car before retail.
Yep. No, I think what, you know, just what she's suggesting is to adopt the definitions. And then, I mean, even if you make the recommendation across the board, no on the use, at least it's out there and changeable in the future.
I think I would be inclined to do exactly what you just said.
As she drafted, across the board, no?
Yeah, across the board, right now as no, and adopt the definitions, and then let's... I think we want to see how this plays out, not be the leader in making it play out.
Okay.
How does everybody else feel about that? I'm not, I'm just giving my opinion, I'm not making a decision.
I like, I like that idea, Karen, I agree with you and Jason. I mean, if this seems like a way to do retail without having, you know, a brick and mortar retail shop, so I mean, I definitely think we should follow the will of the people, you know, if that changes in the future, you know, we can always reevaluate. But as of right now, you know, the residents of town are against retail marijuana, so that's kind of where my head's at.
So Karen, do we need a motion on this then?
Uh, yes, please.
So we would be looking to motion to accept this draft, it's a warrant article as Kate has written for October town meeting. And would we be doing a public hearing on this first?
The select board would need to grant their permission first, and volley it back to you, then you could do the public hearing.
Okay, so do I have a motion on that?
Don't move.
So I think Jason made a motion, do I have a second?
No, second.
And Barbara seconds, so we'll have a roll call vote, Dave?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Barbara?
Hi.
Jason? Karen, I. Do we have any other board updates? Right, Barbara, you haven't, you haven't...
No, the meeting was supposed to be tonight, and Karen Sherman said it was canceled because they didn't have a quorum.
All right.
I've asked not to have it on Thursday nights, or at least alternate Thursdays, so it's not, you know, against us.
Yeah.
You stood your ground, that's good.
You know, you can do is make the suggestion, right?
Right, right, right.
All right, so we had a heavy agenda, it looks like we are finished. Do we want to hang out a little bit more and chat, or?
Motion to adjourn.
Or that?
I'll second that, Jason.
Okay, Scott?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Jason?
Hi.
Barbara?
Hi.
Karen, I.